Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Town Hall Council Meeting for July 12th, 2017. We have two public hearings to begin this evening. The first one is with respect to Planning District. The purpose of this hearing is to hear any representation from the public in the matter of an application to the Minister of Municipal Relations by the Town of the Paw to form a Planning District with the RM of Kelsey. So I'll open the floor up to any questions that may come forward or any further information that people would like to... Well, I will then... Any members of council wish to address the issue? Close the hearing. Our next public hearing is a variation. It's to hear representation from the public with regards to variation application 2017-04, submitted by JM Holdings Limited at 702 and 728 Gordon Avenue to bring the existing uses in compliance and the addition of a Tim Hortons drive-through. And I would ask that Mr. Work come forward and if you could state your name. And Alice, what's up?
Michael Work, President of JM Holdings, Michael's Corner Store. Been working on this for about six years. Nothing really happened until about 18 months ago. And our proposal is what the drawings and everything show, looking for an entrance off of Gordon Avenue on 728 Gordon. And the drive-through is approximately 255 feet long. It'll come around to where the loading dock is now. And my office will be the Tim Hortons drive-through. And there'll be a 25-foot counter inside the store. So there'll be no more entrances or exits of the building. Anybody that walk-ups will go into the store to get their coffees or anything to do with the store, as well as gasoline, et cetera. That's existing business. I guess the variances are... Some of them are to... Actually, most of them are to bring them all in line with, I guess, the pizza originally back in '95 is most of it. And I think the Tim Hortons part is just the extra parking, which there's ample parking there.
Does council have any questions, Mr. Work?
Yes. You're planning to turn in right off of Gordon Avenue, a highway?
Yes, same as everybody else.
Does anyone else have any... Sorry?
Just for clarification, are your laneways going to be marked with, say, curbs or something so people can't crisscross?
Yes. Yes, we've been through this for a number of times with MIT. Also, Sam and I have been back and forth. And the combination, there are going to be extra curbs put in for exits and entrances on the Gordon Avenue, like the existing store.
Okay, on the highway, but in your... On your property?
On my property. It'll be basically the part of the sidewalk, the boulevard, and the curb itself. There'll be upgrades there.
Right. But on your property, do you agree that your plan includes a crisscrossing of exit from the Tim Hortons to an entry to the other, to also parking that's going to back into one or two of those things?
Yes.
And they don't necessarily coming out line up with the access to the street?
They will line up. That is part of the plan that I've done with the town, to make them line up. That's what they requested. That'll be at my cost.
So then there'd be a three-way?
Just two. It'll just be two. Exit and entrance.
Yeah, but I mean that one... The exit for the Tim Hortons, which is an entrance to the gas and your...
It'll be separated.
Those are... That's a two-lane now.
It'll be separated. It'll be the same thing. It'll be separated by a boulevard. So you'll be able to... Entrance on one side, the other side you'll exit only. So exit only and entrance only on that Gordon Avenue one.
Okay, thank you.
Is the drawing... You guys don't have that drawing?
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay.
Well...
It's just got an arrow. It doesn't show any markings.
Doesn't show the...
It shows the direction of travel, but it doesn't show any markings on the pavement or anything.
All right. Any other members of council? Any members from...
One more... Sorry. One more question.
Okay.
Have you got permission from the province to go off a highway to turn into here?
It's not up to the province.
It's not up to the province?
Nope. Town of the Paw looks after its highways from the edge of town to the other edge of town.
So if somebody's pulling in there, will they stop on Gordon if that's full? To pull in there?
I think they'll keep going or they turn around and go inside the store. If you look at Tim Hortons across the river...
No, I'm not looking at Tim Hortons across the river. They have a separate parking lot, so that's totally different. You're going off of Gordon, going into there where it's already a busy... It's already a very, very busy corner there. You have residential right beside, and you have a school just down there. I'm thinking it's a very big safety issue. I travel this road every day, morning and night, so I do see the amount of traffic. I'm just asking questions.
Okay. Based on the traffic study, it operates on the high times at a 42 percent capacity. The other 10 minutes of the year, 25 percent or less.
Counselor?
Just with regard to that area where the... On one direction, they turn and go into your car wash, and from the other side, they turn and go through the Tim Hortons. That gap, are you changing anything to what currently exists to give more space for that?
I miss... Are we talking Gordon Avenue or the...
I'm talking about on your property.
Mm-hmm.
You've got a design so that you've got traffic crossing. Your Tim Hortons line coming out gets crossed to go into the car wash. The car wash goes around in the opposite direction to the Tim Hortons traffic. Are you going to have a barrier?
There'll be curbing. There'll be curbing. That's separate.
So like, what I'm worried about is trucks nowadays have mirrors out to here and whatnot, and is there going to be sufficient problems? Because if you have a tight area to drive within and accidents start to occur, even if it's just clipping mirrors, well, generally, people stop and say, hey, what are we going to do? So then that could potentially back up onto the highway.
Well, they'll have to jump over a one-foot curb to hit the other vehicle first. Because there'll be a one-foot height curb separating the two.
Okay. Thank you.
And both are driving very slowly. As you're into... Both are turning. And the Tim Hortons side is moving approximately every 30-plus seconds. And the car wash is about every seven minutes. So the car wash is fairly slow. And of course, busy time is when it pours rain, and after that, you get some washes. But this time of year, fairly slow. Your busy time is April May, that's about it. The rest of that is more a thrill to take, slower scale. I wish it was backed up all the time, but...
Just one more. Just one more question. Are you going to have a debit machine in there just for coffee?
I have debit credit.
Okay, so I have a... The reason I'm asking that, because if somebody's paying for their coffee with debit, getting a coffee, paying with debit, you're not looking at 30 seconds.
My transactions are between one or two seconds.
That's... I find that hard to believe, but okay.
We have fiber optics in the store because of the lottery machine, so we use that for our debit, for our internet.
Anyone from the community wish to say anything? Okay, please come forward if you could just...
Much of this there, Michael. You and I are going to have competition.
Can you please come forward and just state your name for the record, please?
Then how the heck is he going to hear me? The question goes to him.
There's two chairs right there. I'll bet you he'll be able to hear you there. I think. Michael, can you just remain up front here, please?
She doesn't need the mic here.
I don't need the mic.
Excuse me, can you state your name?
Do you guys need the mic for me?
Pardon?
You need?
They need.
That answered my question.
So she can't hear you.
I'm good enough here just to read your lips. I'm Heather McKenzie. I live at 730 Gordon Avenue. I'm the neighbor. Six-foot-high fence. What's it supposed to be between my place and your place? Exemplar kind of a fence. I asked for one like McDonald's.
We just built one at West Oak, okay? We'll look at that. I'll move the same thing. That's the plan.
And the height?
Six feet.
Can you have it higher?
Have to ask the town. They think six is max. If you want an higher, I'll stretch it.
It would be a variation.
And I want it all the way from the back lane, all the way to the front.
Not a six. The front part will have to be three, three.
I told you, it doesn't have to.
The front part coming to the sidewalk so that when traffic is coming out, they can see pedestrians. It has to be lower towards the front yard.
It's out of the entrance.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's the entrance. Oh, okay, okay.
But it's still front yard. It would still be in the front yard, so it would still have to be any kind of variation.
So many feet, and then it goes higher. It could be...
It's possible. You just have to go through the proper steps for it.
Okay. All right. Next one. Garbage stand. On your thing, you have the garbage stand right beside where my back gate is. That's my only exit out of my backyard. Your garbage stand is going to contain a lot of food. The garbage stays out there over for a week. They only pick it up one week at a time. I am highly allergic to yellow dagger. I want it moved. I don't want it in that corner.
That's actually the Town of the Paw said where it goes. I mean...
Then the Town of the Paw can move it. It's not going there.
Well, it's only going to be moved.
I understand the reason behind it. I don't want it there. Everybody else on that back lane, we put our garbage out the day before our garbage gets picked up. None of our garbage stands there. Here is because it's a store, and since had it there already in that one corner for years. It goes out regularly. Understandable. You can't keep the garbage inside the store. Right? I don't want it by my garden.
Okay, we'll take that as information.
Okay.
Good.
Number three, you have a walk-in freezer in that that's going to be on the other side of your car wash?
That's optional. That's only if it's required. Probably not. That's just a straightforward thing Tim Hortons does, cross-selling. That's an option.
I'm concerned about the noise level. Both are bedrooms on that side.
Fair enough. Why does it sound a little... Right now, mine are on top of my roof, so you don't want to hear them, I guess.
Pardon me?
Mine are on top of my roof. My compressors, or my compressors from my freezer, move them inside the store. They're on top of the roof.
Okay, so that means what? Will it or not go there?
No. They'll be on top of the roof for theirs as well, higher up. Yes, I don't think they're going to be putting them in.
You're going to come creep up my house and find out?
We'll put the shrubs there.
Delivery car. Where are they coming?
Mostly will come in the front door of the store, which most, over half, come in the front door now.
And how are they coming down our back lane or coming on the main street where you have your big Tim Hortons entrance too?
Same as they deliver now. They deliver early mornings. The only one delivers late is Cork.
You didn't answer my question. Back lane, front please.
It won't be back lane. There'll be no access to the back lane from the store.
So we got guaranteed we would not have any big truck coming down the back lane and pulling...
Unless they want to throw in over a six-foot fence and they give you that.
Pardon me?
There'll be a six-foot fence down the back lane.
Six foot what?
Six-foot fence down the back lane as well.
Okay, so there's no way they can get into the store, and they're not coming down the back, coming around the store, and then coming in?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one. Hours of business. Right now, your door closes at 11:00. What's going to happen to Timmies?
We're open till... Well, Timmies actually is 6:00 AM till 11:00 PM.
And is that what your door is going to be too? At 11 o'clock, everything's shut down?
Basically, my back is going to 11:00 as well, but only probably the same hours of run. You're in town this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 10:00 midnight, and the rest till 11:00.
Say that again?
Right now, we run till 11:00.
Right.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right.
And then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we're until midnight.
All right, so we're not expecting anything from 5:00 to 7:00, is it?
God, no. I already did the 24 hours. Don't move the bag over.
Thank you. And where are they ordering? So where does that order stand? Outside my bedroom window?
No, no. It'll be probably right at the back when you come around.
Right on the corner.
Closing the back lane?
Yeah.
So at the end of the park and you're not at the beginning?
Is it shown there? Yeah, it's shown on the corner.
What is it?
It's shown on the corner, right around the curb.
Right around the curb where the garbage stand is?
No, but the next curb.
On the next curb?
Closer to the store. Closer to the store, not closer to the...
Where's the window where they're picking the stuff up?
Right at the store. There's only two car lengths between where the order boxes and where the window is.
So you order, and they're going to have the order right away. Whereas at the other one, you have what?
Two cars.
Two cars and a stop. You've got to get stopped.
You've got a driveway in between them.
I know, but you get stopped there, and then two cars. So that length of period before you go ahead and get your order.
Two cars. Tim Hortons has to be 23 seconds each when they start moving.
Lighting. How many big lights am I going to have shining on my side of the house?
How many do you want?
None.
Okay. Right now, as far as it is, does it show light? I don't think it shows lights on them. Maybe one by the garbage stand, I think?
Which one's going to move?
One of the worst ones, yeah.
So there'll be no light?
I don't have a light there right now, other than garage lights. It's more than...
All right, that was all the questions that I'm... What do I have? How was that one?
It's over.
No, it wasn't. So the fence out West Oak, right?
I do. We just finished it here.
And if I want a bit different than the one from McDonald's, I'll get a different.
Sure.
How far is your curb from my fence going to be? How much of the grass space do I have?
How far is your ground off your lot line?
How far is my what?
Ground off your lot line.
Six feet in.
So that's where the lot line is, is right there.
So you're going to be six feet in from your fence?
Yeah. Well, on the lot line, actually.
Pardon me?
Let's try to just... We'll get ready to...
Just so you're aware, any fence can be built right on the property line.
That's going to be built right on the property line?
I'm not saying it will be. That'll be up to Mr. Work, but a fence can be built right on the property line.
Right. Development from the fence in.
Yeah, it has to be... Well, any development is usually 25 feet in from there, meaning any kind of structure, which I understand there's plenty of.
Or a curb.
The curb, that's not considered the structure for the... Like, when you're looking at structures, it's designed more for... Like, Randy, you'd be aware of this with safety, to ensure that it's so far from the neighboring property in case there's a fire, so that it has to be a certain distance away from the neighboring property. The curbing wouldn't end... Planning guy, sorry. The curbing wouldn't be... Like, it wouldn't have to be 25 feet in from the property line or the fence.
It shows five. It shows five.
Yeah, which is 20.
Yeah. Shows five.
And as far as the actual height, if you're wanting to change that, or if it needs to be more than six feet, we would have to go through this public hearing process again to permit it to be higher than the six feet.
Really?
Yeah.
I can't just talk to him and tell him to do it?
Sadly, no. He would have to go through this process again.
But you're going to have to build them so... Where it is presently, it would probably end up being six and a half from where you're standing right now. It'd be six and a half plus anyways, because the ground is obviously low right now.
Yes, it is very much so. So we can build the ground up and still have a six-foot-high fence on there?
Yes.
We could have a big hill and have six-foot-high fence up there. You wouldn't have to worry about that. Right?
Nobody will see any windows by the time you put that fence in.
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Clarification. That garbage stand you're sitting is Town of the Paw saying you have to have it in that corner?
Within two feet of the back alley.
In that corner?
No.
Well, that's the part of the space.
But it could be moved anywhere on that property, right?
It could be wherever you decide to move it.
I just need that clarification.
Okay, anybody else?
Can it be moved from the event to the park?
It can, it can.
Okay.
It can, it can.
Okay. It's right there.
Well, that's where they...
I have one more question. How much is our back lane? Do you take it away?
Back lane, I don't have it already.
And you don't want your fence out onto the back lane area?
I believe it's one foot.
I think we've moved out of the realm of the hearing here. It sounds like you guys are having a conversation.
Pardon me?
It sounds like you're having a conversation.
We are.
That's okay.
We are, but it had to be down here. He still had to answer the question.
I answered all your questions.
He's answered your questions.
Pardon me?
I've answered all your questions.
All right. And it going out too?
I think it's one about a foot.
Okay. All right, well, I have to ask that question.
That's fine.
Because that back lane is... People that live on Gordon Avenue, that's our driveway.
I understand. I do. I understand.
We don't get down back, so we don't get to our driveway.
Yeah, but the conversation you ended up having just at the end there was more of a chat, and I couldn't hear a thing, so... Which is nice.
Couldn't hear anything?
Hardly. I heard. I listened carefully.
Want to point my hearing aid? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other issues?
We have one more person who wants to speak.
Okay.
Hi, Sally Anderson, Flat 12 LaRose. I'm against the variation orders that's been presented by JM Holdings. I guess I have seen many things occur in this area. When I first moved in, I moved into a residential area that I was sending my kids to children to Apaska School at. Yes, there was a convenience store. That was nice. Then we go to car wash. At that time, I was told, don't rock any boats. I didn't rock any boats. But thanks to that car wash, and keep in mind, people are creatures of habit. Once they do one thing once, they have a tendency to keep on doing it. The car wash, people enter the car wash, they go through the car wash. There was a nice sign sitting there that told them to turn to the south. Some people did abide by it, then came in front of the school, and then up constant, either down LaRose or back to Gordon. Okay? Twice, I was rear-ended in that intersection due to the fact of people pulling out of the car wash with all the excess water dripping onto the Gordon. And I'm at the intersection, somebody comes behind me, they're going a little too fast, not expecting the ice, hits me twice in all my years. Okay, that isn't said for everybody else who's been in that circumstance. At that point in time, I was very concerned about school students crossing in front of me. Fortunately for me, it didn't happen. Now, with the variation, it's being asked that I want to put the children more at risk because there's going to be more people. Tim Hortons has a following. They're going to come. They're going to enter it, and they're going to leave that lot however they choose to leave it. It doesn't matter what signs are there or what barriers are there. People are of habit. It's going to happen. Okay? If it does go through, I do have a concern with the extra traffic. Technically, they are to turn to the right. That takes more traffic past the front of the school, more traffic down Constant, more traffic on Seventh, more traffic on LaRose. Potentially, we've seen McDonald's and how much garbage is all over. I don't want a commitment by someone saying, I'll hire someone to go out there and pick up garbage. I don't want the garbage there to begin with. So I'm here to voice my opinion on that regard. The other issue, the traffic congestion as lineups, because his Tim Hortons is going to be no different than the Tim Hortons across the river. There's going to be lineups where food will say that there's not. Let's deal with it before, not after. Last, I see he's asked for a variance on parking. Currently, he has 10. We're going to reduce that down to five. So as a customer, I need a spot. Where does that leave his staff parking? Is it going to be on LaRose? Is it going to be on Seventh? Is it going to be on Gordon? Is there going to be something assigned? It's a concern of mine. Biggest concern I have is the amount of traffic we're going to have in that intersection with the kids. And I think the children is our first priority. I think... The other thing I see with the variances is a lot of the variances, he's cutting into more than half he's asking us to vary down. That's a little concern for me.
Okay.
Okay. Also, it would be just a notation. I received the letter less than a week ago. Okay? I do have a couple signed papers here saying that they are against it. The more people I talk to, they all would have really appreciated if we had a diagram sent to us at the same time that this letter was, so that we understood exactly what's being happening. Not everybody can make a trip down here to see it, but I think in all fairness, either if you're not going to mail one, put one in the paper. And I would say before this is done, if it goes any further, that an actual copy of it gets put in the paper so people can physically see a diagram as to what is being proposed. I thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you.[1587.12] Okay, thank you. Are you able to leave those documents with us?
Yep.
Just so we have the other people as well? Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? I'll declare the hearing closed and we will open up our council meeting at 6:26 PM. I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask for the adoption of the agenda by residents.
Move by myself, second by Councilor Commonwealth. Be resolved. The agenda be adopted as presented.
Any discussion on the agenda? Call a question, all in favor? It's carried. Item number three, confirmation of minutes, and there's a pileup.
Move by myself, second by Councilor Commonwealth. Be resolved. The minutes of the public hearing, regular council meeting and the committee at the whole, June 12, 2017, and the minutes of the public hearing, regular council meeting and committee at the whole, June 26, 2017, be hereby approved. All statutory declarations haven't been implied yet.
Any questions? Call a question, all in favor? This is just going to take a moment, folks. Brian has to sign for the two off on, so. You're the red flag, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into citizens' period. Which one do you want to do first? Do you want to do Rotary first? Okay, we'll do Rotary first because they're here.
Good evening, council. Peter Todi and I are here representing Rotary Club of the Paw. We have three or four items we'd just like to provide for information, some update, and perhaps some guidance from council. First one is the walking path down by the river. People know that it's been underwater a fair bit since spring break up and over the last few years periodically, so we're looking at realigning the walking path roughly from the, the bench by where the Paw River comes in over in front of the Rotary wheel and the Rotary sign there at Rotary Park. So taking the high area and coming into the southwest corner of the parking lot at the fish cleaning shack. And in such a way that it will, as you get onto the, into the parking lot during those high-water years, it'll line up with the trail on the other side of the, of the parking lot. Now, we had a little meeting down there with Sam and Chris and Ben a few days ago, so they understand what we're proposing to do. We've got an option of subcutting the width of the walking trail, putting in some crushed gravel and paving it, and we've got a quote from a local contractor, so... And the contractors, I understand, would undertake all of the contacts with MTS and Hydro with respect to any buried lines and whatnot. So we're proposing to do that sometime here in the next month at the outside. And what we, what the end result would be is that there's essentially two paths down by the river. The high road when the water's up and the low road, once it's receded and the path's been cleaned and put back in its proper form, which I understand the town typically is responsible for doing so. We'd also put up a small sign at the end of the, the new piece that we're building, just so it directs people to walk across the parking lot and there'd be a sign at their walking path at the other end. So that's for information and I, I'm not sure whether there's any permits or authorities that we need before we embark on that. But we can speak with Randy or someone else at a later date. The second one is, we have our temporary, I guess you would, our mobile Bill Bannock sign down at the old information center property owned by Mr. Jakes now, and he recently received an order in respect to mobile signs. So he had forwarded me the order that he's got and we're a little unclear whether our big metal Bill Bannock sign on his property is considered mobile and whether we're going to have to move it or not. We're obviously taking the case that it's, it's not a commercial sign, it's advertising for a nonprofit agency. And it's, while you could lift it if you had a large tractor, it's not pole-type or anything of that nature. And it's a preferred location for us and, and the owner has, is fine with us leaving it there. So the bylaw, I believe, allows council to provide authority to stay there. And that's what we're asking for, for consideration, to leave it in that location. The Rotary Club had applied to the Moffett Family Fund for the purchase and installation of a zip line at the Terry Fox Park. And one of our illustrious members filled the application form out and we've got a grant for just shy of $20,000 and our club has committed an additional $5,000 for the purchase price of that equipment. So I'm not sure when we can expect delivery, but will be sometime later this summer. And I've been led to believe that typically when we buy playground equipment, that town personnel typically do the installation. And we're asking for consideration for, for that to happen.
If I can just comment on that. Of course, before we would even consider doing anything, we would have to run that whole liability scenario against our insurers if it's in a public park.
Okay.
So if you could provide me with an email or further information as to the height and everything, I would really appreciate that. The sooner I get that, the quicker I can answer.
We can... I think the specs are in the piece that I've got here, but we'll get it to you for certain, Randy. Thanks. And the, the Snackland Pond Deck that the Rotary built recently, some members of the public were concerned about some slumping that's occurring in front of the deck, creating holes and a bit of a danger. And I was contacted, because I'm the chair of the, of the walking path for the club, and so as of 2:00 this afternoon, there's been a temporary fix. The holes are filled with gravel that we put there. So it's fine for the time being and out monitored over the course of the summer. We have, this fall, I'm hoping to go in there and actually get back under the deck. We did some leveling of it and whatnot this spring to make it safe and presentable. There may need to be a bit more work that's required, but it's sound and sturdy to my estimation at the present time. The holes are filled. So if there's any further subsidence in the material that I put in there that requires address with the Rotary Clubs, we'll get on it. And that's about all that I had. Just as I say, want to keep council up to speed on some of the things that we're doing. And if we could get a phone call or whatever, some notification on our request to leave the, our Bill Bannock sign at the south end of town and confirmation that town's prepared to look at installation of the zip line at, in due course, we'd appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Any comments at all from council? Could you state your names or whatnot?
Kent Whaley and Peter Todi.
You announced him, you didn't announce anyone.
And we're... Both Peter and I missed the meeting when they were electing new executives, so we're going to be present for the club this year.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the good work that you do in the community. And we will obviously have a discussion about this. I mean, there's six Rotarians in the room, so, right now as we speak, so, you know. Speak, follow the club.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Heather. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was trying to count the six, one. Didn't see Michael was still here.
Okay, Community Development Corporation. Got to go up there? Sure, here, there. Doesn't matter, you can go from there. Doesn't matter?
Hey, boys, where are you going? You're not going to stick around for the rest of the show?
No. Well, there's just going to be fireworks and refreshments for that.
I've got an extra bottle of water with you.
That's okay.
I will call later.
Okay.
Good? Everyone's good? Yeah. I can finally look right in your eyes. That's amazing.
Me too. I was going to say, he's looking at Andrew.
Did you make a joke?
I know. And Andrew's a blushing.
So as part of the agreement with the CDC and as the chair of the CDC, I believe it's every quarter, we're to provide an update to council. So this is the first one we've done. Myself, I'm roughly 11 months into it, 10, 11 months now. So I'll just give you a quick overview and then at the end, if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. The Paw and Region Community Development Corporation is an entity based in the geographical area of the Paw, RMF Kelsey and Pasco Cree Nation. The CDC was established and given the mandate to develop and promote regional economic activity for the entire region. Financial support is provided by the Town of the Paw and the RMF Kelsey. Focus of the CDC is twofold, primarily as a catalyst and a resource for the attraction of new business and industry to the region, but equally important as a supporter of existing industry and enterprise. And as most of you know, the CDC from the get-go played a leading role in the transition of the former sawmill, pulp mill, to the operation of the new ownership group, Canadian Craft Paper Industries. And we're proud to be a part of that process. Currently working on a destination marketing committee, or working with a destination marketing committee on hiring an assistant. And what I've been told is there's five applications so far and in the next week or so, people are going to be going through those applications and looking at hiring someone. So that's very exciting. Some of the other topics that have come up is a base tax. Can I say that right, Randy? Sorry, what? Base tax. Okay, yeah. It's sort of like another word that starts with F, but not... And I have copies of this here. So a subgroup is working on getting some information on that that we could pass along to council. Just speaking either to the RM or Flintfond, other jurisdictions that have imposed a base tax. I think it's something, the group feels it's something worthy that the community should look at. Also, as most of you are aware, because a number of our counselors and staff are at the meeting on May 9th, there was a stakeholders' meeting in regards to the Grace Lake closure. So this provided a great opportunity for all parties to get an understanding of each other. And since that time, Mathias Colom has approached the CDC requesting a letter of support in their prospectus submission. So that's going to be forthcoming in the coming days and there won't be, or either through Jim or Randy, copies will be provided of that. Further to that, I have copies of the statements, current statements, that if everyone, I've presented them before in the, in the previous months, but if anyone would like a copy tonight, I have some here. That's it. All right. Questions for council?
So I guess one of the things that kind of raises a little bit of a red flag for me is in saying that the CDC is going to provide a letter of support for Mathias Colom in regards to Grace Lake Airport. And this council passed a unanimous resolution to approach the provincial government about closing the Grace Lake Airport because they had already told us repeatedly that they were going to. Because as you know, it's just not sustainable financially for us to run two airports. Currently, the taxpayers of the Paw are paying for both airports. Provincially, they pay for Grace Lake and on their municipal taxes, they pay for the Clearwater Airport. So I guess my concern is, is the CDC should be working in collaboration with the Town of the Paw, you know, to be economically sustainable and feasible. And it's going completely polar opposite of the direction and the conversation that this council has been having. So I, I guess I would hope that the CDC, more than one member of the CDC, would come and sit down with council to talk about that before making such a bold statement, I guess. And I mean, the CDC is their own entity, but I just think that in the spirit of collaboration, that that should be a conversation to be had on how we're going to approach that because that makes a lot of impact on our decisions because we have budget that's coming up. So does that mean that going into our 2018 budget, we should be looking at decommissioning the airport? We're talking about spending all this money on upgrading the Clearwater Airport and doing runway upgrades and buying equipment for maintenance and all these things and capital plans and looking at five-year long-term plans. And to me, why are we putting time and money and resources and spending big money making sure that we have the best airport manager? If that's the direction that the CDC, I guess, feels that, that is the economically smart thing to do. And I'm not saying that it's not. I'm just saying that, to me, that's kind of a slap in the face, I'm not going to lie. And again, that raises a lot of red flags because that's not the conversations that have been happening around this table. And I mean, you yourself moved the, the resolution to approach the province and it was you yourself who brought that issue. Sorry, can I finish? Can I finish though?
Yeah, sure.
So it was you yourself who brought that issue sheet forward, that we should approach the province and that is the direction that we should take and that is the attitude that we should have. So again, a little alarming to me that now it seems like you've totally 180ed and are going in a totally different direction without having any conversation whatsoever with this council.
So first off, the CDC is run by a board. So I'm one person and one vote on a board, right? So there's a decision on the board. Secondly, as I started off saying, our, our role, we see, is twofold, right? One is bringing new business to town, but also supportive of existing industry. So we're talking about 30 to 40 jobs, quite a large payroll, very similar to what we faced with, with Tocco closure, right? So there's certainly an economic impact and we're a regional group. If you go back to November, when the CDC, members of the CDC and the mayor himself, we met with deputy ministers in Winnipeg, the point was to discuss a regional airport. Our two airports are how to handle it going forward. Our correspondents this past week from the government outlines the same thing. How are we all going to work together? I think even if you go through the speeches we're getting from CKPI, the success of our community rests on everyone working together, not closing one or the other. As far as the council, where any council had, my opinion is that they're somewhat mutually exclusive in that if, if Grace Lake was to close tomorrow, that wouldn't affect, that does nothing to our airport, right? We've, we've taken a business problem and our staff here have done an excellent job. They went in and found the best people to run it. So we talked about expenses. Runway was the last one. Those, that's ACAP funding. That's not coming from the taxpayer. That's coming from the federal. The street people we just purchased, it's federal dollars, right? So these infrastructure upgrades are because we've taken a business problem, or they've taken a great business problem, looked at, say, how are we going to fix this? We're going to go get the best manager, put them in place and let it roll. So two years from now, if the airport's still not making money, then I think as a council, we have an issue. But as far as the CK, the CDC goes, right? A discussion was held and this is, was the direction taken. And I mean, there was no request for letter of support from the town as well, right? So that goes both ways. But I mean, we could debate all night about this.
I know, but come on, Alan. As the chair of the CDC board and as a councilperson, your job should be to go to the CDC and liaison the message of council, just like your job is to come back to us and liaison with the message of the CDC is. And I get that you're one person and you're one vote, but you're the liaison between these two. So this conversation should have happened a long, long time ago.
I just think it's just rude to cut her off, okay? Let her say what she needs to say and you'll have your turn. Okay? Thank you. Carry on.
Again, just that, I mean, that's your job, is to make sure that there is a clear line of communication. So I'm sorry, but that's a poor excuse. Like, if you, if you, if the CDC was approached, like, you knew that this was going to have an impact. And we've been having this conversation about what do we do with our airport for years. So to come now and say, "Oh, well, maybe we should have a conversation of what we should do in a couple of years." Uh-uh. We've been having this conversation for years. What are we going to do with this airport? And you know full well what the conversations have been. So to now say, "Well, maybe we should have a conversation about if the airport isn't making money in two years." We had that conversation two years ago and we were all on the same path. The government said, "We're going to close Grace Lake." Okay, we're going to close Grace Lake, then we'll focus our airport on Clearwater. And to say the taxpayers haven't been paying for upgrades and things, that's not true either. We put money into reserves every year and that money comes from the taxpayers. They've been paying for the airport every year. Whether we get a little bit of money or a lot of money to buy certain things is irregardless. They still pay roughly $200,000 every year for that airport. So we've been having these conversations. So again, I'm super, super frustrated because I felt like we were all on the same path. Now to say that the CDC didn't know what council wanted or like, that's, again, that's a poor excuse because you should have made sure that that was clear.
It's, it's not a case of, I didn't liaise with them or tell them. They're a board. There's members on the board. They voted, they made a decision.
That's great. Then you should have came to us a long time ago and told us. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's process. That's how process works. This is all our, right? I mean, guys, there's a process to follow and that's it. They follow the process. I brought it forward, we had a heated discussion, and we made a decision, right? End of story. Whether I like it or you like it or don't, it doesn't matter. That's what the, that board is empowered to do, right? Like all our other boards. And as far as the airport, I, I, just for clarification, are you saying the airport loses $200,000 a year?
Over the last, I believe, we were told by our CFO, over the last five years, if you look at the, at the average, it's about $200,000 or $160,000. I don't have the exact number or the exact spreadsheet in front of me, but...
It's been up and down.
On the average, it's been losing money every year.
When there's a surplus, there's a tiny, tiny surplus. And when there's a deficit, there's a massive one. So over the last four years, the, the airport at Clearwater Lake has lost about a quarter million dollars. Quarter million dollars. Over the last four years. So I'm, I'm curious, if I may. Sure. Oh, no, I'll let the council ask some questions.
I, I'd like to comment one on, with, with regard to the CDC and, and the fact that the town chose in its wisdom to strike a board called the CDC, and this has been an ongoing thing, they kept losing members and whatnot. They struck one. It's, it's a board. It's not a branch of council. It's not a department. It's a board. A board is independent of council. I think it's incumbent upon council to put the trust in the people that have been placed on that board to use their knowledge and wisdom, which I think we would probably agree in most cases in these matters is, is far greater than individuals here. But we have to support the decision of the committee and we have to, as a council, be thick-skinned enough to take criticism if criticism comes our way. It doesn't matter. If somebody disagrees with what council has done, we can't, we can't stuff them back in the bottle and say, "You can't talk about that." We have to listen and learn. And I think we can learn together. I think the fact that, that we have a counselor that, that stepped in at a difficult time and was able to, to move that project, that route forward when in fact, in the previous years of this council's term, it was inactive. Now it's active, now it's doing. Now we have to deal with the reality that, that you have an entity that, that often agrees, but occasionally will disagree with us. The other, the other thing I would say in, in support of them is, is the resolution of council was to request a meeting with the province, which the province chose not to meet with us, I guess. And also, there was an expectation that we might have entered into some discussions, which is what are now coming forward. which is what are now coming forward with the businesses and groups. That was out of our hands, it didn't happen. With regard to your committee, do you, does the committee meet on a regular basis or?
Yes.
And are the meetings open or closed?
They're closed, but no one's ever asked to come, so I guess I'm willing to come. I could put that forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just clarify that my issue is with lack of communication?
Sure. I mean, to echo councillor Rock's point, I support the CDC. It's functioning, it's functioning well. This is one instance where it's forced into a position to act as a regional body, which it is. It's got regional representation on there. It isn't solely funded by the town. Its sole purpose doesn't exist to be the arm of council. We've seen that when we attempt to do that, it doesn't function. People run from that board and committee, and so it tends not to function. So I'm okay. It causes me some angst to know that other companies are, you know, that companies such as Missinippi has gone to the CDC of the PA and region and said, hey, we want a letter of support because we're wanting to keep this airport open. It doesn't line up well with what we were hoping to see for regional strategy, but I think as Brian points out, sometimes it has to be okay and we have to trust in process. The province has a position that it's taken, we have a strategy in place for our infrastructure. The CDC is acting, I think, in accordance with what would be no doubt, good process, good discussion and meaningful decision-making. I trust that whatever letter it is they choose to write from Missinippi will be structured in such a way as to reflect appropriately what it understands to be the situation. So, and with respect to communication, I don't know when their last meeting was or when this letter of support request came forward, but we have a CDC representative here talking to us right now. I'm imagining that that wasn't months ago, that that request came from Missinippi. So I'm okay with the frequency and speed of the communication and I'm okay with the behavior of the CDC. I'm happy to see it functioning as it is. That's all.
Anybody else?
Do you have an annual operations plan for the next year?
It's coming. We don't have anyone hired.
Sorry?
It's coming.
Okay.
We don't have a hired staff, right? As you're aware, so.
Have you guys selected who's going to sit on the joint committee with the destination marketing committee so that we can get a person hired?
Myself and the email went out because the request came last Friday. So it's now Wednesday. They asked for two to three people.
Okay, my, I don't, I don't disagree with what councillors Rock and Forward have said. My concern though is that the town, over the course of the last three years, maybe even four, has been working in a direction to eliminate the losses at Clearwater Lake and we determined that likely the best route to go would be to cease operations at Grace Lake. That there are certain costs that are going to come to Grace Lake. The previous government decided they were closing it, the current government has decided they're going to close it. It's what we talked about for years. And so I just want to know that you did your best to put the town's position forward in communicating with the CDC.
Yes, but at the same time, the government put forward a request for interested parties.
I'm sorry, I don't know why, but I can't hear you.
The government put forward a request of anyone, yes, they're out of the airport game, is my understanding correct? Is that everyone's, and is anyone else interested?
Okay.
Is that not?
Yeah. Okay, so, so that's what's happening, you're, they've come up with a...
They've came forward and said, hey, the prospectus, the same letter that we received, right? To support their prospectus, is like, could you guys support our proposal?
So what happens when the town of PA puts forward its prospectus that the airport manager's working on?
You know, Jim, it didn't happen, so I don't know, right? This request came forward last week and it was discussed at our meeting, brought forward, a decision was made. It's a decision we chose to move forward.
Okay.
I'm imagining that the CDC's response, if we made the request to them as well for a letter of support regarding prospectus from the Town of the PA, that they would take the same position that they are with whomever it is that's proposing to them?
I don't think we did.
So yeah, can we make sure that the CDC knows that the town is also planning to put together a prospectus so that maybe we can ask them for a letter of support? I mean, if they see ours, maybe they'll change their mind.
Sure. I mean, what can I say? The deadline's in three days, so if there's a prospectus going forward...
I just, I can't hear you, I don't, I can't hear what you're saying.
Prospectus is due in three days, right?
Right.
It's due in three days. So if, to answer councillor Moore's question, if there's a request that comes forward, I mean, they did their due diligence, they brought forward a request, we had a meeting, it was put on the agenda, we had the discussion and a decision was made.
Okay.
So the deadline, my understanding, based on the correspondence we've received from the province, right, is that this prospectus, the eight-to-ten-page prospectus the province is looking for from interested parties, the cutoff date is July 17th.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Am I...
And we authorized the airport manager for the PA airport to put that together. You've seen copies of it.
I'm not sure I understand where you're going. I mean, is the question to him, will the CDC put forward a letter of support? I think his answer is, there's no meeting scheduled between now and the 17th.
So, so yes.
No, I'm just, I'm concerned that there's going to be two opposing views and you've got, and you're sitting in two chairs. I'm just, I'm concerned about that.
Jim, there's a board of people that make a decision and they go forward, right? That's how the process works.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Is that not a fair assessment of how boards operate? Like, I think everyone's touched on it, we can keep going on. Decision was made.
So again, concern about the lack of communication. The first line in our agreement with the CDC says that this agreement will provide terms in which the Town of the PA and the CDC will support, cooperate and collaborate social and economic development of the town. And this does not sound like we're cooperating or collaborating at all. And as, not the sole funder, but the biggest funder of the CDC, like, that causes concerns that as one of your key stakeholders, you're not cooperating or collaborating with us on this.
I'm...
So I would hope that you would go back to the CDC and you would say to them, hey, listen, guys, what I, what I didn't know or what I didn't tell you when we had the last meeting was, the town is putting a proposal in as well. So maybe before we pick which one we're going to support as a regional body, we should look at both and make an educated decision.
So I made it under, okay. I guess my point is that we've, we had a meeting, there's a process to follow. The CDC exists, the terms of relaying back and forth with council are outlined in that agreement, that's why I'm here this evening, right?
Yeah.
Again, I, my job isn't solely, my job is to respect the wishes of the board, right? The people that are sitting there elected, not to go advocate for my cause and if I don't get it, I find another way to do it, right? That's a recipe for disaster. Based on our response, like, our response to the province has already gone forward, correct? So I, now we're, now you're saying there's another one, so I don't know, right? I mean, the question came forward.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
I just have one comment. Okay, so you said the CDC's been going for 11 months. How many times have you come to council with a report?
This is the second time.
Okay.
The first that I remember.
Pardon me?
The first that I remember.
Yeah.
No, we put one in for two weeks ago, right? And then they asked for, and the reports have been, the statements have been in the minutes?
No, I just find after such a long time, we should have had more reports.
But this is no...
For me, I don't like, no, just a minute. I don't like deadlines. Got to do this in three days. I'm sorry, I need a little, my personal, professional, I need a little bit more time. Oh my God, three days, make a decision. There's been lots of, there's been big decisions lately and the deadlines, I am not comfortable with. And I'm just, that's all I'm stating. I'm not comfortable with, we need to do this in three days. And it's like this, that, this, that, it's, I'm just not comfortable with having, not having all the information in front of me and what's going on. No, not comfortable. It's just my opinion.
Councillor Rock?
I'm confused now. Is this considered a report from the CDC or is this considered a recommendation that this council has to approve? The discussion seems to have shifted from hearing a report on what the CDC's doing, which is what we require, and this is a group of volunteers, to, well, now we have to approve what they do. Well, that was never, that was never the structure, as I understood it. Otherwise, we would have said in that, that, well, you meet with us once a month and tell us what you're doing and we'll re-approve it and then you can go back and have your vote and, that's not what it's intended for. The other thing with regard to CDC, we have to recall and remember that they represent business interests. There's, the town is one of those interests. How many other businesses are impacted and affected that may have spoken? We went to that, the meeting that was in West Canada. There was a large number of people that are financially impacted by this whole thing and they got missed out and Winnipeg, through the government decision, didn't seem to want to spend a lot of time talking to them before they decided that they were going to close it in 60 days or 120 days. That creates a problem. And my concern with this is we need the CDC to keep functioning, we need those members to work voluntarily on our behalf as a community so that when we come out the other side, we've made progress and improvements. Now, if it takes, if it takes a week or it takes a few years to achieve what we're trying to do, so be it. But I think if we can collaborate a little more and give each party a chance to do their part and then compare the results, we'll come out of it a lot farther ahead.
Yeah, I would only reply to that, that he has made a report, we've asked some questions and that's where I think we're headed here. That's what I think's happening.
Yeah, don't shoot the messenger.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Item number five, the CAO report.
The following is an update as it relates to various departmental reports. The museum received Moffett family funding for our arts program. There's lots of preparation by recreation in the museum, or there was for the Canada Day dance, which I understand went over very well. Museum is in the process of doing new artifacts and adding them into their collection. They've also made application for grants to Manitoba Community Service Council for new computer equipment. CFO was away on vacation, is back and there's some catch-up. She's also been working on some final stuff. The auditors requested additional information for 2015 audit, working on current financial month end. We are busy preparing for mediation services with QP. Orientation of summer students and day camp has been underway. Our day camp has already started, they've had one good week already and starting the next. There's been little success in receiving qualitative candidates for the energy advocate position. I know Chris has been working with Manitoba Hydro to try and see what we can do to get this position filled. Sent out benefits detailed to other benefit carriers for quotes. Minor ball and minor soccer wind-ups were held. Recreation presented the Moffett Family Fund checks. There was quite a few applications that were received through the Moffett Family Fund. MBCI was, our grad was held at the arena, it was a successful event as usual. Just a reminder, recreation fees increased on July 1st as per our policies and our resolutions. Bronze medalion course was canceled due to lack of registrants. Fanset is onsite for the upgrade of La Rose. I don't know if anybody's been around town, they can see that they've already started stripping the pavement and they're doing the temporary water services, so they're going to be going pretty quickly. Summer students are out cleaning parks and grass cutting. We have lots of letters being sent out for onsite with premises. Crews are repairing valves on Third Street in preparation of the highway's resurfacing project. The dock, we are getting some complaints, the dock has not been installed this year due to high water levels. I know it's frustrating for a lot of people, but it is pointless. We would be continually pulling debris out of there and, or from the dock. And we're also concerned that we're going to be ruining our brand-new dock by putting it in when the water is this high. We're contemplating holding a release of memory this September, this is something that was done in the past. Unfortunately, I received too many complaints and last year we didn't do it, which is sad because we had a lot of people that were really looking forward to the fifth anniversary of it. So we're going to try and see if we can get some public input if they want to hold it again. Water breaks are still a concern. Even though it's that time of year where it's warmer, we're still having quite a few water breaks. Engineering is working on EAP for the sewage lagoon. We've been having lots of services at Lakeside Cemetery, sadly, but we've been doing a lot of cleanup out there and there is quite a few services, especially in the last couple of weeks. Building permits are slowly rolling in. Again, there's been a good, a good communication system out there in letting people know what's required and when they need building permits. Fire crews responded to a major fire at a local hotel. Unfortunately, the structure was a total loss. And working with a potential developer on the reconstruction of a derelict building.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to item number 7.1.1, LED lighting retrofit.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Commodore, whereas a tender for the LED lighting retrofit closed and two tenders were received. Whereas the cost of the project will be $65,934, which includes labor and materials, whereas the incentive will be approximately $9,059. Therefore, be it resolved that council accept the tender submitted by Treves Electric for the supply, delivery and installation of LED lights in the water treatment plant, town garage and civic center in the amount of $65,934. And be it further resolved that the monies be expended from the Federal Gas Tax Reserve Fund.
Any questions? All questions, all in favor? All right, 7.1.2, lagoon upgrade.
Moved by councillor Commodore, seconded by councillor Gibb. It resolved that council authorize the municipal superintendent to move forward with the following steps with regards to the lagoon upgrade, as per in-camera discussion during the 26th of June 2017 committee of the whole meeting. Provide JR Cousins consulting direction on how the town would like to proceed. Work with Manitoba Water Services Board to explore grant funding options. Provide Manitoba Sustainable Development an action plan and timelines. Create a model for appropriating dollars required for this project and have a meeting with the tri-council regarding the lagoon issues.
All right. Any comments? Serious questions? All in favor, oops, sorry, councillor Gibb.
Can I comment after we approve it? I just want to put forward, the CAO brought forward something before about us approaching the province, that we're doing something as far as our lagoon issue goes, and this is a step towards that. Also, it's La Rose Avenue along with Third Street and the work that's been done. So I think now's the time to go forward to sustainable development and probably copy growth enterprise and trade because without growth, our tax base can't grow. And we know we have issues, but I think we're taking some steps forward to deal with that going forward. And again, this was something that our staff brought forward that maybe we should have listened to back then and maybe we didn't. Obviously, we didn't, but to grow the community, we need to grow the tax base. So there needs to be a happy balance between meeting our requirements as far as the lagoons, but meeting some growth capacity as well. So there's a bit of a trade-off there and it would be great if we could approach a province and get some direction in regards to that.
Okay. Any other comments? Call a question, all in favor? It's carried. 7.2.1, fire department, summer students.
Moved by myself, seconded by Alan Gibb. Councillor Alan Gibb resolved that council approve the hiring of a summer student for the PA Fire Department from July 4, 2017 to September 1, 2017, as per in-camera discussion during the 26th, 2017 committee of the whole meeting. And I think it's a wonderful idea.
Any other comments? All questions, all in favor? It's carried. 7.3.1, Samwaller Museum, audited financial statements.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Alan Gibb. Resolved that council accept the auditor's financial statements for the Samwaller Museum for the year ending December 31, 2016, as prepared by Collins Barrow, HNA LLV.
Okay, any comments?
I just come a little bit leery to vote in favor of this motion because I know that the museum has, I guess, some issues with a deficit, whereas there was some money that was owed to the town that they had to pay back. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that the museum board has cleared that issue before. I'm okay with, I just don't understand how they could sign off on their financial statements if they're disputing.
It's not the statements, it's the 2016 audit and it's the audit that identified where that shortfall had come from.
Okay, I thought that was their 2015 audit that I... Okay, I thought that was their 2015 audit that identified the shortfall.
No, they restated their 2015 and their 2016.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all good?
Good then.
Okay, all a question, all in favor? It's carried. Uh, seven point three point two, Policies to Be Repealed.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Scott. Whereas there are a number of policies no longer required due to the fact that they are covered in a bylaw or the collective agreement, or they no longer apply. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorize the repeal of the following policies. GG dash one 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 Riverside Cemetery Work. GG dash one one four Governance Council Role. GG dash one one five Governance Deputy Mayor Role. P dash two one two Cell Phone Usage Towns Vehicles and Equipment. T dash three oh three Commercial Garbage Stand. T dash three oh seven Fifty Fifty Grant and Aid Dash Streets. PD dash six oh three Development Permit. SR dash nine oh nine Rest Break. SR dash nine one four Union Employees Wage and Benefits. And SR dash nine two four Hiring Responsibility Admin Management and Personnel.
Any discussion, any questions, concerns? Call a question, all in favor? It is carried. All right, um, seven point three point three, Policy Section Update.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Scott. Whereas changes are required to be made to the policy manual to conform with the town's current practice. Therefore, be it resolved that council approve the following changes to the policy and procedures manual. Protection Part Two has been removed, and those policies have been added to the general government and personnel. Transportation Part Three is now Public Works Part Two. Environmental Health Part Four was removed, as there were no policies in this part. Public Health Part Five was removed, and the only one policy in this part was moved to general government. Recreation and Culture Part Six, or sorry, Part Seven is now Recreation Part Six. Fiscal and Administration Part Eight is now Finance and Administration Part Four. Staff Relations Part Nine is now Personnel Part Five. And Water and Sewer Part Ten was removed, and those policies are now part of Public Works.
Any discussion on this? Call a question, all in favor? It's carried. Uh, seven point three point five, Board of Revision.
Nope, seven point three point four.
Sorry, policies and procedures to be amended.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Scott. Whereas there are a number of policies that require amending or to be moved to a different part of the manual as per recommendations by the appropriate manager. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorize the amending of the following policies which are attached. P two oh two Workplace Safety and Health Program Statement. T three oh nine Land Survey Pins. FA dash eight oh seven Credit Card Holders Conditions for Usage. SR dash nine oh four Administrative Staff Standby. SR dash nine zero six Staff Recruitment Process. SR dash nine one five Retirements. SR dash nine one nine Hours of Work Non-Unionized Staff. And SR nine two nine Town Employee Wellness Center Membership Fees.
Any questions, concerns? Call a question, all in favor? Carry. Board of Revision, seven point three point five.
Moved by Councillor Rock, seconded by Councillor Zalinski. Whereas the town has received notification that the sitting of the Board of Revision date for the 2018 assessment role will be November twenty-seventh, 2017, at six PM. Whereas in accordance with the Town of the Paw Bylaw Number forty-five, four-five-four-oh, being the organizational bylaw, council sits as a Board of Revision. And therefore be it resolved that council sit as the Board of Revision on November twenty-seventh, 2017, at six PM in council chambers, eighty-one Edwards Avenue, to hear appeals for the 2017 taxes added and the 2018 assessments. And further be it resolved that council appoint Jen Early as the Secretary for the Board of Revision.
Thoughts? Call a question, all in favor? All righty, uh, seven point three point six, Letter of Support for the Community Renewal Corporation.
Moved by Councillor Rock, seconded by Councillor Zalinski. Resolve that the, that council authorize a letter of support for the Paw Community Renewal Corporation with regards to their application for funding through the Community Futures Manitoba Churchill Region Economic Development Fund to be used to hire a person for a two-year term to identify existing business opportunities for employment and gaps to existing business by utilizing research through GET and Statistics Canada to identify strengths, weaknesses in local employment in the Paw.
Any comments, questions? Call a question, all in favor? Okay, seven point three point seven, Payroll and Accounts.
Moved by Councillor Rock, seconded by Councillor Zalinski. Be it resolved that council authorize the following, following accounts. General Checks Number one nine zero nine two to one nine one eight zero in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Payroll Period Number twelve in the amount of one-hundred-and-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Electronic Funds Transfers in the amount of ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars and eighty-five cents.
Any comments, questions? Call a question, all in favor? It is carried. Uh, seven point three point eight, Council Members Code of Conduct.
Moved by Councillor Rock, seconded by Councillor Gibb. Whereas in accordance with the Town of the Paw Council Members Code of Conduct, which is a requirement under the Municipal Act, every member of council is expected to respect the decision-making process of the municipality. While members may hold different views on any given matter, once council has made its decision, all members must uphold the decision. Therefore, be it resolved that council agree that all written correspondence that has or may have a financial implication be approved by council by resolution. And therefore be it resolved that all correspondence addressed by, addressed the mayor or mayor and council, be circulated to all council.
Any discussion? Yes, Councillor Rock?
Uh, yes, uh, the concern here is, is sometimes, uh, things were occurring, and, and all council members weren't, weren't getting equal information and whatnot. Uh, and so the desire here is, is to remind everyone at council that, that when, when correspondence is going out under council's name or letterhead or whatever, it has to be, have been approved by council or, or discussed in council in advance, or at least come up at council at some point. And we need to do this so, so it lacks confusion so that we can all be part of the same team and understand what's going forward and what's being, what commitments are being made on behalf of the town.
Sounds like you're speaking in favor of the motion.
I am.
Anybody else? Call a question, all in favor?
I'm just waiting for Chris. I'm just going to actually speak against the motion. Um, I feel that, uh, under the Municipal Act, it states that our CAO and our mayor are, are spokespeople for the town, um, and that there are some situations where, um, it would be too timely to have something be circulated to council and then have the back and forth of change this and change that. Um, and I don't feel like this resolution, uh, would, uh, give us the opportunity to be able to get letters or announcements out in a time of emergency. So I'm going to be speaking against the motion, and I, I'm confident that when the mayor speaks, that he speaks on the best interest of the community, so I don't feel the need for it.
Anybody else? Call a question, yes, Councillor Rock?
In, in closing, closing remarks, please.
Pardon me?
Can I make closing remarks?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, the, the problem became a problem when, when recent situations occurred where, where information was going out and was in the public realm that councillors weren't fully aware of and hadn't, hadn't seen copies of documentation that was being referred to in following documentation and that sort of thing. So it became problematic for council to know, well, what exactly are we talking about? And where, what direction is it, is it pointing us? Uh, sometimes it gets out into the public that we're, that we're behind something or not behind something or whatever, and in fact, council may not have spoken one way or the other. So we have to be careful that when we're communicating out there, that it goes that way. I would agree, though, with, with, uh, Councillor Morris, that there will be times when the head of council, which is the mayor, has to make a decision and then bring that information back to council. So the sequence may change, but the important thing here is the information has to get to council as quickly as possible, so everyone's aware of the same thing and knows what's going on. Because we have to remember, we are representatives of the people, and anybody can stop us on the street and ask us questions about what's being said out there. So we need to have some understanding and be kept informed at all times. And I think that's the intent of this, is let's put it out there and communicate it well to the council.
Anybody else? Okay, call a question, all is in favor? Posed, defended? Okay. It is carried. All right, um, seven point three point nine, Urban Indigenous Coalition Program.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Rock. Be it resolved that council authorize the, the CAO to move forward with making application to the Urban Indigenous Coalition Program through INAC for grant funding as per the in-camera discussion during the June twenty-sixth, 2017 committee of the whole meeting.
Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor? Okay, carried. All right, uh, seven point three point ten, Sam Waller Museum Funding Request.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Morris. Whereas the Sam Waller Museum presented a budget to council for 2017 in the budget amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars was approved at the April twenty-fourth, 2017 council meeting. And whereas in the, in the Sam Waller Museum letter dated March twenty-fourth, 2017, which was received on June twentieth, 2017, the Sam Waller Museum Board requested additional funding in the amount of five-thousand-six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. Therefore, be it resolved that council denies Sam Waller Museum Board's request for additional funding and that the Sam Waller Museum grant for 2017 remain at one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, subject to them signing the grant funding letter.
Any discussion? Councillor Rock?
Uh, I'll be brief, because I've, I've said this before, but I, I have a problem with, uh, the wording of the resolution. Uh, I understand its intent and, and whatnot, but it, I feel, one, it doesn't clearly reflect the request of, of the museum board. And, and looking at the, the letter, they, they identified that the, they've, the board felt there was a deficit of fifty-six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. And, uh, so their, their request was to, uh, increase the 2017 budget, approved budget by that amount, which would then have increased it to one-hundred-and-thirty-seven, uh, five ninety-eight from the one-hundred-and-thirty-one, nine seventy-nine. The way this is worded, like, I sit on the museum board, and I, I would be voting in favor of it, their request, except the resolution doesn't reflect their request. It in fact reflects more, because it says deny, which, which implies a debate and discussion went on, and, and the general consensus was, well, no, we're not going to go there. We're not going to provide that, which is fine. It's, it's a decision of council. But I have a problem as a councillor that I'm now being asked, if I want to say yes to giving them the fifty-six-hundred dollars, I have to say no to something. So I go down on the record as, well, you voted against it. Well, no, I didn't vote against their ask. I have voted against the wording of the resolution was written as a denial. And, and I don't think, and I know I, I sat in the meeting, there was never an intention of the museum board to ask council to vote against something. They, they were asking, the question was for approval of, of an additional funds in, of fifty-six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. What we're left with by the wording is that yes means no and no means yes. And that, that's a problem. I, I really feel that in, in most, if we look at our previous motions and resolutions, they always generally say, well, they ask us for this. If you don't wish to give the money, that's fine. You vote nay, you vote against it. But this is putting us in that position where it's, it's a reverse thing, and, and I, I would make a motion that we, we table it until such time we could correct it.
May I ask the mayor to please read the very last part to ensure that all members of council are clear before they make the decision?
Therefore, be it resolved that council denies Sam Waller Museum Board request for additional funding, and the Sam Waller Museum grant for 2017 remain at one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, subject to them signing the grant funding letter.
And we sent this out over email as well to make sure that, so, I'm sorry, but at this point, I think you need to respect that the rest of council is okay with this resolution and moving it forward, because nobody said otherwise when it went out for email before it came here.
Okay, anything else?
Just to wrap it up, uh, the, the, the language we're using is, is not what the ask was, which is part of the problem. If, if, if the ask was to deny it, then, then the museum's letter would have said that, but it didn't say that. It said, please approve. So that should have been the question posed to council. Now, this wording in this, uh, resolution reflects a debate in a committee. And that's fine, that's, that's where those things get discussed and where they go. But had it come back as the, the ask that was discussed in committee was, do you approve the fifty-six-hundred-dollar increase in their 2017 budget? Then it would have been easy. Then if I would have been saying yes, and others may have said yes or no. We've taken away that opportunity now just by the language you use. And I, I, I feel that that, that doesn't clearly reflect the ask. And, and when we get questions, uh, they shouldn't be reinterpreted. They just should just be presented to council.
Anybody else? Yes, Councillor Ford?
I would, I mean, counter to Councillor Rock's point. You put forward that the question is, do you approve it? I put forward that the question was to debate whether we approve or deny their request for more money. We debated it, we denied it. The resolution reflects our discussion at committee of the whole, because we discussed it at committee of the whole, and we can't make a decision there, Brian. But we discussed it there, we debated it, and the consensus at the table was that we are not going to approve, means we are denying the request for additional funding. The resolution in front of us says exactly what we debated, which is that we support the denial of the request for additional funding by the museum board. And, and, and so it becomes semantics. We can have a double negative or double positive, or a negative and a positive, and go yea or nay either way, but as long as everybody can read and understands what the word deny means in here, then it's fine. The fact that you don't want to vote no, because you actually are in favor of the increase, or you're not in favor of the resolution, is great, but we don't, I mean, I'm not going to waste any more time than I have already discussing whether or not we should use the word deny here or not. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a complete waste of our time, in my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Councillor Commodore?
I understand the wording, and I will go with this.
Councillor Gibb, you were going to, did your hand up? No? Okay. All right. Bringing up to a close, and I'll call a question, all in favor? opposed, defended? Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining. I can't vote for or against such a motion.
Can you abstain without a reason?
That is, but I just gave you my reason.
Okay.
It didn't reflect the request from the group that requested it.
All right, uh, we will, we will move on to seven point four point one, Variation Application, twenty seventeen oh three three thirty Fisher.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Rock. Whereas the town received a variation application from True Blue Development, and whereas the town held a public hearing on June twenty-sixth, 2017, therefore be it resolved that council approve, approve variation application number twenty seventeen zero three as submitted by True Blue Development to vary the following: From the required five parking spaces to four from the required area of five thousand square feet to four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet from the required site width of fifty feet to thirty-three feet.
Any discussion?
I just want to clarify, because Mr. Rourke was here for another variation application, that this is for a different property. This isn't for the public hearing that we had earlier tonight. This was for a public hearing that we held two weeks ago. So just, just so members of the, of the public are aware, we're not voting on the public hearing we had today. We're voting on what we had two weeks ago.
Any discussion? Call a question, sir?
No, no, I have a discussion. Um, this, um, resolution is to approve his parking spaces so he can- This resolution is to approve his parking spaces so he can then go into the building mode, or is this just parking spaces?
Yeah, well, he's gone from having a restaurant to a retail operation and from three apartments to two apartments.
Okay, okay. So I just have-
Any other comments?
I just have one thing, just one quick thing to say. Okay, I have it written down, so. I feel that if I approve this variation, that gives a right of way for the owner to proceed with this building. A while back, council came to the decision that all pertinent information from the concerned departments were presented to us to make a valid decision. At this point, I have not seen enough information to make a valid, to approve this resolution.
Any other comments? Call a question, all in favor? opposed, defended? Okay, it is carried. Seven point seven, UZ and Board Minutes, we just receive those as information, is that what we're doing here?
Yep.
Right, they're presented for information.
Okay. Eight point one, Destination Marketing Grant Funds.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Rock. Be it resolved that council authorize the following payments to the PAU, to the PAU Committee 2017 in the amount of $2,000, the PAU Kinsmen in the amount of $2,000 for their convention, and the PAU Kinsmen in the amount of $3,000 for their Kins Center. With the checks to be drawn from the Destination Marketing Reserve Account as per the recommendation of the Destination Marketing Committee. That last line is added to the resolution that you've probably seen.
There was also one for the Tourism Northville as well, right? Okay, that one was re-approved.
Okay. All right, everybody good? Any questions or concerns? Call a question, all in favor? It is carried. All right. Of course, Museum Board, Counselor Rock.
No meeting, no report.
Chamber Commerce, Counselor Commodore.
No meeting.
Okay, it is summer, is it? Sustainable Forest, Counselor Rock.
No meeting.
Citizens on Patrol, Counselor Commodore.
We didn't have a meeting, but we are having our barbecue on July the 7th, 27th?
Really?
Yeah, we are. Party done. No, sorry. 29th, July 29th at Elsie's.
Okay. CDC, Counselor Gibb?
You can do it again?
No.
Destination Marketing, Counselor Morris?
We had a brief meeting, we talked about getting acceptance and rejection letters like formalized, so we did that, and we're glad that the grant recipients will be getting some funding. At our next meeting, we'll be talking about putting some financial people into place, treasurer, et cetera, et cetera, some signatories. And I guess our next step will be to meet with the CDC, with our ad hoc committee, with our representation from the DMC and the CDC to work on hiring a staff person. We have received five resumes so far for the position, and again, thank you to the town's HR department for helping us advertise that because we got some hits off of it. And I think, I don't know, secretary, am I missing anything?
Your second board, Counselor Zalinski?
No, no meeting.
TPCRC, Counselor Morris?
So we had a meeting, sorry, I'm just looking for my minutes because I'm horrible and I'm trying to remember. We approved some small grants for disc golf and a seniors walking program, so getting them like, kind of like Fitbits. A couple of housing fix-up grants, I believe there's still a little bit of money left for that, and they're working on getting ready for their street festival, which they're going to do the same weekend as the homecoming, so the August long weekend, it'll be outside of the arena. So if people are interested in booking tables, you can get ahold of Desiree, and I'm going to put a call out to our fellow councils at OCN and the RM. The Spray Park and the Skate Park are doing a pie-in-the-face slash water balloon fundraiser, and my fellow counselors as well. So they're looking for some town celebrities or some politicians who are willing to come and get pied or hit with water balloons during the street festival. They'll supply the water balloons and the pie, they just need your face, and they're going to do it as a fundraiser with 50% going to the Spray Park and 50% going to the Skate Park. So Jim and I have volunteered already, as well as the vice chief from OCN, so if anybody else wants to join us, get in touch with Desiree at the Community Renewal Corporation or Jerome at Funky Threads who chairs the Skate Park Committee.
Library Board, Counselor Ford?
No meeting.
Joint Committee of Council, Counselors Commodore and Rock?
We tried to have a meeting and it failed, so we have to regroup. And of course, it's summertime now, so.
Difficult.
Yep.
KSD Committee, there was no meeting. Second Citizens Period, if anybody would like to bring something forward, this is your opportunity. Carrying none, I will-
I think we got a bit this-
Sure. Call up to the microphone.
No, I don't need a microphone. We're all under. The comments I'm hearing are good, but it'd be nice if everybody could speak at the same level, right? You mumbled a lot. When you aren't really driving a force, yeah, here's the-
Oh, I'm like me?
When you aren't driving your issue really hard, as you were, when that, when you were sitting here, you mumbled.
Okay, sorry.
Other than that, you're very clear, you're point to the point, but you got to stop the mumbling.
Okay.
Jim, you're talking to him, you know, you should have talked to her at the same time. That's my only comment.
Okay.
Other than that, thank you very much.
Love the feedback.
Good.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Right here.
Okay, we're all, that makes sense to adjourn, thank you very much. We will resume in a couple of minutes in the committee room.